Started and called this meeting ordered for a work session. Sounds like we're going to have some student performances first off.
Yes, Danny Trammell, our director for community engagement and arts integration will introduce our students.
Excellent, thank you sir.
Hello. Good afternoon, good evening. October is Arts Month and so we are very fortunate to have some amazing arts programs worked by hardworking, inspiring, talented students who are meant to. So tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Taylor Wymer and Ian Ferguson for our performing arts, but also want to make you aware of the visual arts that we have around the room. I have Mr. T and Mr. Bonner at the high school and also Miss Peckler from Utras Elementary School. And the artwork as well. If you have time today, welcome.
Alright, hey everybody, I am Taylor Wymer. I have the honor of teaching the middle school bands and orchestras. This year has been awesome. We are rebuilding and growing and the kids have just been a blast. But this year, it's real music again and it's the best thing ever. I have two rock stars right here. This is Emily Mason on clarinet and Beckett Evans on oboe. They are going to play a duet for you and they decided to have a challenge for themselves as well, so they're going to play some bonus art.
So I thought I'd highlight that Utras Elementary because of our small size. One of the really cool things is the kids can focus more on individual work than a lot of times they do. So like we have a violin program and I've found that if I send half the kids to the pianos with headphones, then I can really focus on the kids with violins and then they switch. And in the meantime, you know, they can get to know the piano, which is a good thing for any musician. So anyway, this is one of our fourth graders Elliot Ferguson and he's going to play some Bach.
Wonderful, thank you so much. If you could spend more time listening to musicians and getting into more business, but we do have a long agenda this evening. Thank you so much for taking time out to be here.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely. Getting into our board development discussion, I know Gus and I were chatting a little bit about reading coherence. It was a chokier reading than we talked about before during development. So if you didn't get through the whole thing, that's fine and dandy. I do have a little bit leg up even though I left my copy and my book in my office. I've read the book and I'm actually leading a book study on it next semester. It is the entire premise of the book again is that coherence within education, going to the macro view, micro view and back out again, so that we have not these independent little pieces and not just staying at the 30,000 foot view, but we have it all together and have an understanding. This one specifically relates more to that bigger picture that I thought might be interesting as we start approaching and digging deeper curriculum and getting into our strategic plan. Now that allegedly COVID is behind us and we're going to start, right? Yep, nope, okay, so allegedly. So thoughts on whatever piece of this you did get a chance to engage in? Especially from a board's perspective, but also maybe from a parent's perspective. And some of you are parents with children in an education system currently to hear what some of these large districts are doing to achieve success and how that translates practice wise.
Something I got through very little, let's all go first and take some of the bit that I got.
That was my strategy in college, Jack, just go first.
He's excellent, in fact. Anyway, one thing that I thought was very cool was the quote by Ernest Shackleton, who was a famous explorer going to Antarctica and his damnies motto was by endurance we will conquer. And I love that because it's persistence. And then the other thing I got out of it besides that quote, which I like so much, was the concept in the first few pages about promoting internally, looking for ways to promote folks that are kind of inside your group or your district or whatnot. And what that says to the people that you're working with, I think that's kind of the concept of trying to work yourself out of a job because you've got somebody coming behind you who's going to fill in. So I'll highlight some of the first four pages.
Thank you, thank you very much. Other members? Better jump in before your ideas get stolen.
I did like the principles as learners. It really is removing a one down type of organization and rather working together, integrated. I enjoyed that piece, really the whole thing, offering much more inclusivity and ownership and building strength, leadership from within. As a whole, not only achieving then our needs and accomplishing our goals, but doing it as a group using all perspectives. So while we're doing, while we're moving toward that, these objectives, we're actually developing the team within, which obviously then continues, continues forward.
Are you ruminating?
I'm kind of the same way, I didn't get through the whole time. But I guess the biggest thing that pulls out is the part where there were leaders who possess a growth minded set and grow their teams. In my aspect, I think, I think we're doing, I see that happening within our board, but I also see that really happening within our district. I guess one of the key points I would pull out saying that we're
I felt a lot of that. I felt like I was reading through this going open mind and my head, you're doing a lot of this work. And then of course our role and purpose for the culture.
And I think a big piece of it for me, even being in the business, is that it takes time. I tend to be a very urgent personality, much to a lot of people's chagrin. But when you get to page 63 and part of that, even moving into 63 before that, you know, one of the things that they're really talking about is this degree of collaborative learning that you're going to look internally, you're going to grow your people, value your people. Leadership is working alongside each other. And even though there is certainly a hierarchy, but that hierarchy is flattened as we learn together. That will look for external, once we've kind of looked internal first. But it starts talking about this professional learning communities. And that's what, you know, we're using a lot of our Wednesday time is for. And if you see a good chunk of this is really devoted to that coaching, that learning for professional learning communities to get to deeper learning. And then if you look on page 65, sometimes this collaborative inquiry, sometimes I think, I don't know about other businesses because since I've been 21 years old, which we all know is like dinosaur age, all I've done is public education. So all I know is in public education, we tend to complicate things more than we need to. And I think this like assess, plan, act, reflect cycle. And people kind of mix that up, kind of like with a plan, do you reflect whatever. But I mean, it can be that simple. Those are the either long term or short term, continuous improvement cycles. That's what you're using your MTSS process and your PLC time for. Are those learning blocks, those adults getting together to collaborate? What do I notice? What do I wonder about student learning and how the impact of teacher actions and leader actions have on students and student outcomes? So for me, it's all about focus. We adopted for us a strategic plan and basically we've got to work that plan. So I think we'll spend a little bit more time getting back to this when we do our retreat in January. I have some interesting things from the National Association of School Boards as well that I'll save for January to really talk about big picture things that school boards do.
Can I just add a couple of things? I think it's connected and I really do believe that that work we did.
Because you guys are all reading it too.
No, just you? No, yeah, just me for now. The work that we're doing in the retreat, going through the action plan, really kind of assessing out some more aspects of that. And on page 51, where it talks about District B recognizes that the status quo will not allow sustained successes. So they seek a task team of, you know, these folks. And just want to share with you kind of what we've started to do in the DAC. And this was, I think, an exercise for our three standing subcommittees, folks selected those. And then we broke out into the six leverage points for the action plan. And each, each member of the DAC, which is about 25 individuals, selected one of the leverage points that they really want to understand deeply and make sure that as we move along as a school district, that those key leverage points are accounted for and were held accountable to that. So I mean, I think the fact that we have a leverage point that is solely titled, improve the quality of feedback for growth and development, is super aligned to this, this chapter in this book. And then also just wanted to add that our leadership team continues to develop, work through leadership development opportunities. So we're continuing that work with Scott Murphy. And also on an aside, I don't know if everyone else in the board knows this, but after each of these meetings, Tina and I meet with Ellen Martinez. Ellie's the one who facilitated our meeting. So just so that we continually develop our relationship and our roles and then shape the next meeting. So just want to let you know that those two touchpoints are going along in the background. So thanks Tina.
Yeah, again, just a little, again, things to keep us focused. I know that school boards were kind of in the nitty gritty. Sometimes we get, well, attention, we're big picture. We're looking at things at the state level and the federal level as well as the local level. So if that continues zooming in, broaden the back out. Recorded meetings, we wanted to talk a little bit about that. I think we have things posted. What the reminder here is that it's not our official meeting minutes, which have to be approved, but it is a recorded feedback for people who want to view and are not able to be here real time or be real time.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to get feedback if you all are okay with what's posted there. That the recording that is posted does not serve the board of improvement. It's a regular, regular, special meetings can be located in board docs. We'll post that on, probably on the front board docs. If y'all are okay with that.
Yeah, that's correct.
And then just so you know, because there, there was not an easy way for us to add what District 20 has where you go to our website, you can see it, we would have had to pay more to do that. What's going to happen is on, can you toggle to the website or not, to board docs? Feel good to like go to meetings? See where it says video right there? In yellow. That's where anyone would go to get the access to be on the call tonight. And so what we do is after the, after Kat runs the download and does everything on her side, then we just replace that Zoom link with the, the YouTube file. So that's where we'll be.
So they'll be in the where you can be attended board docs.
Yeah, exactly. That work for everybody?
Yep. That's great. That's not a big hassle to have to do that.
No, I do YouTube and then I put it in my VS box so we don't have advertising. I think that's the one we do, I think.
What's the time for you to upload and all that?
An hour about? But it takes me just an hour and a day to get everything from our, not even an hour.
Can you track how many people log in that I just be told, somebody said from some, just like 20 people or 25 people or maybe that was an offline conversation, somebody, there was very few people actually logged in. If you can see if, if nobody logs in, then.
Fair campaign actors, you know, with that tonight. As it was decided that we did not need to review that item. Board officer selection and review policy, probably want to get into this, one, because there's some inconsistencies with our current practices and policy and two, because the next meeting, I don't know if we'll have the vote certified. We should have it certified by then, won't we, by the next meeting from the November 7th elections? Even though we know Natalie and I are running unopposed, it doesn't matter. We have to have it certified before we elect officers and everything. So that will be in our November. But I thought instead of waiting till November to have this discussion about how it all trans, the process, we should take a look at our policy and then make some decisions so we know what our process and procedure will be. Let's see, find all of them. I have a couple of different layers. Does everybody have these?
Several of these are already what's posted. I just thought sometimes it's easy to lay it side by side.
Yeah. Just to take a look, if you want to see the voting method, our Board of Education and the rules. And then if you want to look at D20s, which is a little meatier in comparison. And then you can take a look at our voting method. Did everybody get this or do you want me to, or should I read this one? Organization of the Board of State Statute.
Oh, they all got that. I think
Oh, we got that, good.
The first policy that VDB is really something that I think this board should look at. You can see the last revised is 2008 and it says that you're going to have all of these roles. Well, we don't. And so the positions that you have to have are the A to B. So that policy needs to be revised. That, which we don't have to do that tonight, that can all be done. Although it needs to be done before the or the vote is taken.
Right. Well, and I think even when we switched right before we had appointed the secretary and we appointed the treasurer, right? But I don't think we obviously did not update this or add any detail to rules and responsibilities when we made that decision. So core practice on our part as far as unintended consequences and reviewing the policy ahead of time. I'm scanning through just from my own reference, the state statute right now when we can open the discussion. You guys can give me a couple of minutes. Anything that you want to open up for discussion? Do we need more times or anything you noticed that kind of like, huh, that's interesting?
I'm looking at 4A.
Okay, yep.
And that one with all the other boards and everything I've ever been on. May have, never had typically at the board, anybody doing those jobs. It was either, you know, a finance officer or, you know, I go back to city council or the city clerk, which did the secretary jobs. And I think that those jobs do them adequately and proficiently. I'm not saying any of us can't, but number one, I don't have the time. I want to take the time to do it. And I think the P should be some, what we've got going right now, we got Suzie who does a great job with all the financial. Gives us all the updates and knows everything that's going on with the whole school finance. We have Kendall who does a great job as a secretary. And I think that in my opinion, I would be more than willing to nominate them or appoint them as secretary treasurer because, and I'm not taking anything away from Jack, but I don't.
I totally agree with you. I don't have time. I don't want it. So I'll do the board thing, but I think those things need to be professional.
So remind me, because we just made that decision two years ago. And Suzie was the one, I believe, that wanted a little bit of separation, no? I know you're filling that role for the past poses.
I just wasn't used to that before, so I just brought it up that way that there may want an additional person for a little oversight, but.
If this board asked you to return to that role, would that be adverse for you? I'm just saying since Gary's throwing it out there.
I'm good either way.
All right. I want to make sure before we delve into discussion that we don't have an employee that's like, no, thank you.
I don't mind whatever you guys.
Okay, thank you for that.
One reason I gave everybody District 20s is because and I know the history of this policy is old. You can see when it was originally 63, this is where probably some school districts even had CFOs. And so, I mean, just the evolution of boards in Colorado. But I provided the treasurer because I thought this was interesting to want to look at. That if, if you wanted to do a blend of, you keep a treasurer because you do have that designated role, but you keep the separation with Suzie. So then it's not signing the checks, but really advise the board on what matters. So for example, how much, how might, you know, spending around your line items cost? If there's, if you wanted to have like a hybrid to where it's not the financial fiscal accountability part, but some level towards. So we don't have a district audit committee, committee. But we do this work through the DAC in terms of some of this work there. So I just put that out there as a potential one. As an option. Not that one is better than the other.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm looking at this right now. I mean, even the, even the president and the vice president babies are different than we have worded and how we have coordinated.
So in our, we have a, we would have to revise go to school board officers, yeah, exactly. That, that section would need to be revised for VDB as well. And that's what Suzie does. Right, for someone, you, what you assign to do that, right?
Yes, deposit to the credit.
Do we have, I'm sorry, do we have our current board officer kind of roles, kind of like D20s got theirs? Do we have that or do we have something that lists?
Yeah, it's that VDB should be.
That VDB, so that just looks like a list, that's just one page, is that right?
So in our governance policies?
Oh, I see. It's actually, do you see that, Kendall, if you go to policies, it's, it's like, go to policies. Also, it looks like they're mislabeled. One is labeled, we'll have to update that. Which is two, oh, sorry, there's, yeah, there's VDB and then there's second VDB.
Got the second one.
Yeah, the second one in policies.
And I think some of what, and Jack's, stop if I'm wrong, that you're asking kind of a description of like the president, vice president, treasurer type stuff other than that policy.
Right, do we have something?
There's something in our governance.
Oh, we have something like that too, I saw.
What's it under?
It's VDB, it's the second one.
Two listed in there.
There's two listed there.
Probably combine them on today.
Yeah.
CDB, I support officers.
You need to be with school board officers as a section.
So the president shall, secretary shall, now treasurer shall. Why do people use spots smaller than eight?
Other policy governance, governing groups have the same treasurer, secretaries in different ways, but similar for those responsibilities. Because if you, if you scroll down to the bottom of that and click on that Colorado revised state statute 22 22104, what's nice is that hyperlink sits straight to the specific roles that are defined by the state statutes. So you can go to secretary and treasurer.
So is there, is there a significant site? I was able to pull that up. Thanks Gus for bringing that. So it looks like there's a fair amount of overlap between D20s policy and our current policy for president and vice president. I think Gary's points are right on the mark for secretary and treasurer not needing to be board members. That also doesn't violate 22-32-104, which says that they can be, that they can be appointed by the board. Is there something in D20s policy that's about our policy and always happen, I'm learning, I'm happy to keep learning because there's something. About our policy, I'm always having, I'm learning, I'm happy to keep learning because there's something in there that is better than. Our policy here, do we just need to change the secretary and treasurer to say that they can be in accordance with that Colorado statute? They can be appointed by the board and that we don't have a secretary or treasurer that's an actual director?
I felt like when I read president and vice president, there's a few more things than what we have. But in, for the most part, it's the same. Just have a lot more volume of words. And a lot more words to say it.
So we just revised this about eighteen months ago. It looks like we just provide the second, I guess it's just two BDBs. The BDB, that's the school board officers, it looks like it was last revised April twentieth, twenty twenty. Unless I'm misreading that, which is.
Yeah, so that's one that's good to go. We have to make the prior one, I think.
Oh.
Yes.
Align to it. Where it says all officers shall be members of the board, because that is not currently. So if to, if all we do is revise that one, that's fairly easy. Right?
Yeah.
We just write officers of the board shall follow, president, vice president will be members of the board, secretary, treasurer. Assistant secretary or treasurer, which we don't really acknowledge at this point. May be appointed and not board members.
I guess I would look at you as far as the treasurer for the board. If we had a separate. On the mechanism that we had to control that was separate from what Suzie does. And I could see a need for that as far as the tracking. But everything we do, and I don't want to put any more on her, but. When I ask about money, that, that's where I go see.
Well, and that is an excellent point. So larger boards sometimes do have board accounts. Even each board member has a certain stipend to spend on either pet projects or, I don't know, lunches out. I kind of think it's funny, but right, or steward's and taxpayers' fund. But anyways, it is true that some districts have actually quite a lot of money on board development, that they attend net national conferences and, you know. Spend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars a year on their own development. I think especially in this district, that would be, I don't know, pretty reprehensible in my opinion. But really, I don't see the point of it in larger districts. I don't think they govern any better for spending tens of thousands of dollars personally. But that's a deadly statement, so, but that's my thoughts on that. Ask any thoughts?
On tracking with everyone else. These two need consolidated, honestly, that first one's really. Pretty minute as it is, but. So far running to your president, vice president. Was looked to be a mine and recently revised as we've found it out. So I guess what we're discussing is removal of secretary and treasurer as, as board positions. And simply replacing that with the statement we referenced in the.
Yeah, that's what I heard from both Jack and Gary, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just four A was the, the referenced point of.
The other option, so I could agree with all the other options to say maybe board members or maybe appointed by the board and that we don't have to revisit the policy.
Yeah.
And maximize our flexibility, because I don't think it's a big, you're right, Caden can do a big job.
Yeah.
I think there's not much value added to it, I don't.
Can we combine these?
That's what I was just asking Eric. Eric's going to go to, went to Casby.
Need to see if you can combine them, okay.
Just combine them.
The, the second one is like directly the verbiage from the Casby BDB. Policy.
Okay.
That makes sense, because the first BDB was written in two thousand and eight, so.
Well, I guess what I was also going to have people look at in addition to that. And I don't know if we combined altogether as well, but our voting method for the next time. Just to refresh our memories. And that again, as you correctly stated, was revised in March sixteen, that all voting shall be by roll call with each member present voting A, I, or no. Alphabetically, however, the election of the board president, vice president may be by secret ballot, like if we want to. If the vote is taken by secret ballot, the outcome of vote shall be recorded. In the minutes and then a member may abstain from voting or not excuse by the board for good cause. So I don't know, I mean, how do you want to do that? I don't remember actually how we did it the last time. If even, I know you can nominate others or you can self nominate for the positions. And then I don't know if we remember if we did it by secret ballot or if we did it.
I think we do.
Just out loud, okay. Is everybody still good with that?
I think all the positions were on a post, as I recall.
Okay.
Okay, I, if we can revise BDB, then you all can, it's not an agenda item in the regular meeting. I kind of copied and I'll save it and you don't refresh it. So just, just let me have one minute and then off.
Okay.
Do you want that language to say we should have a vice president's, we don't need an assistant secretary? All of these members shall be members. I'd say all of them shall be members of the board or. By the board. It should say president and vice president shall be members of the board, is that right?
Yeah, right.
Okay, if you'll refresh what I just entered, make sure it's.
It is.
Uh, it's the second BDB.
Okay.
And then if you prove that holds, we've done it.
It's.
It isn't more than.
Yeah. So we just have to say this is okay and then we can.
Exactly, it'll be a revision of BDB.
Okay.
Uh, treasurer needs an R.
Oh, thanks.
Second R.
And so the other BDB that has more of the definitions and more verbiage, that's the same, which basically integrated the, which is basically revised the first mini version, right?
Yeah, that's right. So I think the motion would be to collapse the BDBs from the original policy and then. Accept the revised. And then for offices is.
Title.
On the second one? Oh, yeah.
But then. Motion would be accept.
And add to the agenda for the next one.
Yeah. Relax the two agenda, I heard the two policies into one, you know.
So you have to amend the agenda.
You good? All right, you passed BOC's alternative. Gary would like, has a big ass. Go Gary.
Well, we didn't. Needed alternate, we went through all the BOCs. So we, manatee needs another person that could be an alternate member. And you know, the first person that came to my mind the other day, it's probably the same person that came to your mind.
Who might that be?
Us.
The one with twelve jobs. There's only, you know, you wouldn't have to be all of them, it's.
Only when one of us couldn't make it, like Gary can't make tomorrow night.
I can't make tomorrow night. I'm generally there.
Or I don't know, maybe Natalie and Jack want to attend and see what kind of fun the BOCs has tomorrow night. Maybe, maybe you want to dip your toe in the, you pass BOC's water before committing to be an alternate.
It's always Tuesdays, I do fly nice, yeah, Tuesday night, which will be tomorrow as well, five thirty-five.
It is always Tuesday at this time.
So we didn't, you know, be back or have to.
Oh, yeah, so we're saying maybe Jack.
I appreciate the opportunity, the consideration, but I think it's quite, it's quite.
So like eight meetings a year, four of them are virtual.
Pretty good. Just because there's not, so one of you guys is not there.
Yes, well, if everybody else would show up on a regular basis, it would be a problem, but. Generally, it's Gary, me, and hopefully one other board member from one, from Cripple Creek or Whitley Park. It's always kind of like.
Since I'm not on that board, I can't suggest that maybe they should revise their board docs to make it more appropriate for the people that show up, so I will not do that.
I'm not a real one. Also, I don't know if folks know, Gus, that you're on the preschool council as well.
Oh, yeah, they're really child with council.
Hey, so.
Thanks, Gus.
So we have to appoint somebody else, will you have to serve as the alternate?
I think so, yep. I'm there.
She's, she's there.
You have to be named an alternate to fill in, so if there.
No, literally, like you could do it on the fly too. They want us to name somebody, but I mean, Gary and I, well, I'm at most of them, because I don't have a social life like Gary does.
I'm generally yes.
I generally yes, but I mean, you won't be there tomorrow, right?
No.
And I'm gonna be sad, I'm gonna be sad. We're gonna be lucky if we have a forum, let's just say that. I mean, that's the unfortunate part of it too. We have had situations where we need to go over some things and we don't have forum. I mean, and we can't stack it, we can't be like, we're bringing Gary, Tina and our alternate, right? I mean, that, that won't work, so.
The way it's interesting is that we have two members, one of them has two and Cripple Creek has one. In other BOCs, it's just one board member, but in order to get to this five member board, we had to have more. So if we, in member in another X state, it would just be one.
X state has like nine, they have a board of, I think, nine districts and it's one board member for each district.
That's where it's all different.
Okay, so Elizabeth's alternate, good job Elizabeth.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
And feel free to, you know. Ask when in a bind and keep available also.
Available. All right, Casby, delegate, assembly resolution, I haven't heard anybody, any feedback? Yeah, okay, this one COVID update, sorry.
Just COVID.
Just. Well, I mean, I kind of declared it allegedly, I mean. There wasn't an update, you said there wasn't an update.
I saw some good COVID and influenza last night, so.
It was really hoping we could have a robust, open public meeting discussion about the new guidance that's coming out. I, I know I texted you each separately, just kind of here. I've had to be pretty elusive in my communications, which is not preference at all, but just wanted to kind of give you all an update. We believe that's going to come out tomorrow and. Spending time with superintendents tomorrow, just to make sure we're all on stage, having similar type of guidance around that. So as soon, as soon as I have that, I'm going to share that with you all first and see if you have any questions around it. I think I've given you like the basics of it. It is going to be quite, what's the word, I don't know, disruptive. And, but I think we're in a good, we're in a good place as a school district. And so just wanted to share that with you all. But we have vaccination clinics this Friday, October twenty-second. We're opening that up to all members of the community and I don't know how it is so far in terms of registered for it. But we've shared that with, with everyone. Was that, it was pretty low, because it was just Pfizer, so I think Jay was trying to get. Booster, because most of our teachers were, a lot were staff or head order. Then we turn around and we have another one, November twelfth, and that's after, we believe that's going to be after the, the five to eleven year old is available. It's not the same dose. So we were told that Colorado is getting something like three hundred and twenty, hundred thousand shots. And each, each county gets a percentage based on the children in that, that age group. So we should be getting that around the fourth or fifth of November. And the health department, we've asked the health department to set up childhood sites at each of the school districts. So if we could, we could do that, that would be helpful for our families. We're looking for some guidance around what that looks like. I would imagine we talked about it briefly today, Natalie, Judith Chandler and Jackie and I, just around. Kids are going to need their parents there, and so what, what might that look like for them? So we're going to be thinking about that. So the other one for the community is November twelfth and there may be another one specifically for, for children. Natalie and I present to city council tomorrow, just like updates around mask. And really, at this point, there, there really hasn't been any changes, so we, we don't see the mask changing at this point. Not no doubt. Um, no, I think. So, and then any kind of change that we would do there would be giving folks guidance in advance. I know the, the new guidance that's coming from El Paso is going to be very changing across the county. So again, sorry, can't be more specific. And then, just so you know, we received a grant for fourteen thousand dollars to purchase HEPA filters. And Melissa made an order today for a hundred and fifty of those. So we should be able to get a HEPA filter into every classroom and small space. So that's a, that's a big deal, a small space where a lot of folks move through. And I think, I think that's all the updates, I don't know if there's anything else.
What about, when do you think, it's a fair call for you here, that manatee, actually, since they're the only one in the world right now. With this little city mandate, you think, when do you think they're relevant? But.
We've kind of talked about when the numbers start to decline. And just continuing to, to look at that, just with that high plateau right now. Doesn't look like, I don't know. I think. How the specifics.
Well, it kind of seems. In my opinion, it kind of seems, you know. Throw it down here, half a mile and you're not required, so you've got three hundred thousand people that are doing one, you do. Now we've got a little community of five thousand, that everywhere you go, you know, you could need to wear the mask or you could get a potential fine or whatever. This didn't seem really that important, so.
I mean, I know Elizabeth's going to speak.
I just, you know, that was my thought. If you had the whole. Everybody doing that.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great point. I mean, there certainly are still people in the hospitals, but the hospital numbers from the, from the website. That'd be a great thing to, to post on, how many people can see it, but this is hospitalization. So a number of cases, again, the more people that get infected, the more people are going to have immunity that's probably better than the vaccine. At least I want to study about it. Is it, and I think as I recall, because I did get a chance to watch the city council meeting. I think one of the city councils, and I couldn't tell which one, so that's one of the downsides about those recorded meetings, wanted to bring up. You know, what's our exit strategy, Gary's point, I believe. And the question was called and there was no further discussion. So I don't think, my, at least I couldn't talk in that meeting, that there's any plan in place for a number specifically, and as a number of cases. Is it the percent positivity rate, is the number of people in the hospital? Is it the number of deaths? I mean, some of those, in my opinion, some of those numbers are more important than others. I think obviously deaths is very important. I cases is probably somewhat less important, that hospitalizations is more valuable. That'd be my opinion of this.
You have a number we should be.
I, I'm not an expert in that part.
I guess.
I just throw that up. There, there are, I mean, again, with, I think that if it brings my community that's doing that, there's other districts, I know Elizabeth knows this, that actually have like medical advisory council. I know Elizabeth knows this, that actually have like medical advisory councils. But I, I think my personal opinion is the plan the district had two months ago was a great plan. Was recommending, encouraging people to wear masks and not mandating them. And probably a lot of people would have, and some people that are in high school that have had two vaccines. They might not. And then it seemed like the, the city council, and I wasn't there, kind of didn't think that was an appropriate decision. So they don't think that is, about, in my opinion, maybe investigating it thoroughly outside of the New York Times reference.
Yeah, I think we're just still having trouble figuring, I mean, I think everyone wants a nice strategy. Even if you go back to where we were in the last mandate, then it's fact that 37.
One hundred seventy, one hundred seventy, one hundred seventy.
For positive cells. We're just not, not there. We're just, I think. A good strategy.
I think too, and I really do believe that the guidance tomorrow is going to bring up a whole lot of, a whole, whole, lot of other conversations around this issue and mitigating factors. So I really wish we had gotten that guidance today so we could talk through that. And it may be beneficial for us even to think about a, a special meeting. I know I want some other meeting, but I think it's going to be, it could be or it could not be. But I think we're going to see a lot of changes throughout the county. One thing, Laramore County is going to a mask order today. Of course, this is coming from the health department. That's what makes this very different is that their guidance is from the health department, not from the local city municipality. They have very clear metrics, you know, 40, if they have a greater than 65 COVID patients in hospitals. Intensive care unit utilization at 90%. Cases per 100,000 support. We don't have that because it's not, it like, I think to your point, Jack, it didn't go on because of the health department. You know, we're not on because of the city municipality.
This is the guidance this tomorrow.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry, everybody. I wish I could. But we'll continue contact tracing and all the things that we can do. Thanks, Tina.
Yep. Delegate Assembly Resolution. I haven't heard anything back, so I'm assuming if you want to scan right now and give me any thoughts, that would be great. If not, you're going to bust my best judgment on each of these items.
I would vote too, but if we're on work sessions, I don't want to do that.
So you guys are good. First quarter finance reports.
Okay.
Okay, so sorry, here with the general fund. This is all through September. So typically we're quarter through the year. So in a lot of our accounts, especially our general fund, it should be about 25%. Typically, I kind of, I say in the general fund a little bit more should be like our supply accounts and purchase services. A lot of those should actually be higher than 25% this, this, at this point, because you're buying things at the beginning of the year that'll last all year. But salaries are going to be a little bit below. September is the first month of the new contract. We got a, all the employees got a 4% increase. So July and August are a little bit lower and then they catch up as we go through. Revenue on this, you'll see for the top again is this year, first quarter, and then below it is first quarter of last year. So we're a little further behind on revenue. This is just timing and we have this every month when we run this report. It's just really when, when we get our state share and then when we get it booked into the system. So it doesn't reflect September state share in there, which is a huge chunk in the majority of our, our revenue that comes in each month. So that's why it looks a little bit low. It's, I went and looked again today and the money is in there. So we're caught up now. It's just the timing of running this. But so revenues online, I'm talking about last year. And then expenditures are too, we're right below that 25%. So we're right where we should be for the general fund. Next one is our insurance reserves. Thank you, yes. Um, the only revenue that we have for our insurance reserve fund is a subsidy, a general fund transfer. We typically do those later in the year. There's no reason to give up. Mostly so that we can make sure that they need that full, that full transfer. We know what this is going to be. The insurance reserve fund pays our, our premiums. So we know that. We pay them usually in August. So we have a good idea where we are. This is very typical that we'd spend, we'd be 90% spent because we do pay those premiums, which are big things to sit set this up, the scholarship pool. So we get, we've already got that done. Last year I was a very unique year. We didn't get billed for that until October. So typically it is August. So it just looks a little bit weird to last year, but we are in line where we should be there. We both did it. Okay, so the next one is our nutrition services fund. And this one has been such a challenge because we just keep getting different news from, from the feds on what they're going to do with COVID. And so we have a large general fund transfer in there. It was up to $300,000 last year that we budgeted. This year we dropped that down because we actually brought in so much money. They gave us, you know, all of our students are still receiving free breakfast and lunch. And then we get that reimbursed from the government and, and that's at a much higher rate than we would typically charge students for breakfast and lunch. So we're actually making quite a bit of money in this fund. So well, this is one that will monitor that transfer at the end of the year to see what we really need to transfer there and maybe save a little bit of money in the, in the general fund. But typically, again, this is a fund that expenditure should be right at 25% or at 19.4. So we're doing good with this one. The next one is our grants fund. Revenue for this is you, you spend your money and then you put in a reimbursement. So it's a reversible grant. It's really just our title one and title two funds. So we'll start to do those. We do it about once a quarter, so October, December, and then in the spring we'll do it a little bit more often to get that money and that cash flow going. But again, right at 25% is ideal here. Alrighty. The next one is our athletics and activities fund, Fund 23. This last year is unique here because typically it's a, it's mostly a general fund transfers per revenue. But then we also have some gate money, some the participation money. But we, we didn't have a lot of, you know, we didn't have people playing games and the people that didn't come were free. So we really just funded it solely from the general fund last year. This year that's back up. We're getting some revenue in for our athletics and activities. And then we're actually spending a little bit more money and getting going because we actually have athletics and activities happening on schedule. But again, this is still a little bit lower than that 25%. So we'll just keep monitoring that as we go through. And if we don't need to fund the full transfer, then we won't do that. The last one is our capital reserve fund. Again, the only source of revenue here is a general fund transfer. Typically, we do, we do work in the summertime. So we usually see, like last year, you'll see that we are already over 25% spent from summer work. This year we were doing summer work still from last year. So this will take that when we have all of the, the projects scheduled. So as, as Stuart and his team and as they work with contractors, we'll get that scheduled throughout the year. But typically it's when kids are not in school. So it's break over the winter break, spring break. And then again, in June is really their happy time. But nothing is, nothing's out of the ordinary. Everything's pretty much, that's all the way it should be. You guys have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item on the notes is just instructional rounds coming up. I cannot make up for 28, so that's free if anybody else wants to jump in. My apologies, Jesse. Want it?
Gary, I don't have Gary, but still.
That's a high school, right?
High school. It's from about eight o'clock, so.
I'm assuming you'll be running another group in the second semester or no?
Yeah, they're going to do mini rounds. Sort of what Natalie went to the first time you did it. It's just a sort of, and I can let you all know with this offer as well.
Hoping to be able to make that.
So no one for the elementary school, is that right? That's okay. I know. We'll just let you know in the spring semester.
Thank you.
What was it due on the element?
The fourth. Thanks. That's all.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then the work section is adjourned. And you get a chunk of time, regular meeting, that never happens. So.